I hereby call this meeting the Norwood City Council to order. Please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in this council chamber, we pray for you to do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic before we descend into the ground under God and with his will with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Williams, please call the roll.
Here.
Mr. Gabbard.
Here.
Mr. Geraci.
Here.
Mr. Kelch.
Here.
Mr. DiNardo.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
All members present, moving on to item E, amendment of agenda. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we actually have a few different items that we need to add as amendments to the agenda. You know, if anybody does specifically want any of these separated out to vote on them separate, happy to do that. So I'm just going to make them all this motion altogether. So we need to remove the Joseph VW Group public hearing from the agenda. We need to add a, or sorry, we need to remove that. We need to move L1, which is the YMCA ordinance, to immediately following F, which is minutes of the previous meeting. We need to remove ordinances L5, L6, and L7, which have to do with the Joseph Auto Group public hearing. And we need to add a presentation from PLK immediately before the public hearing for playing card partners. And that is so moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Bonzel. You're going to have a second? Mr. Brayden.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel, second by Mr. Brayden. The changes as Mr. Bonzel referred to. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, the motion passes. Moving on to item F, minutes of previous meeting. Mr. DiNardo.
Make a motion that we file the minutes of the previous meetings.
You're referring to all three, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. DiNardo. Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to G1.
Really, oh, yeah, G1.
We changed Del 1 to G1, correct? So that is, we're going to have the presentation first, Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, if there's, you know, if we don't mind, I mean, I would definitely make a motion to have like a discussion. I'd like to maybe hear from the Y before we do any motions on the ordinance, just so that can help you all decide whether we want to do three readings, or one reading, or two readings. But we have here today with us, we have Jorge Perez, the president and CEO of the Y. We also have Chris Francis, the chief operating officer, and then Rodell, Rodell, can you tell me your last name again?
McCollum.
Rodell McCollum, he is the chairman of the board of directors for the Y. So very appreciative that you all are here tonight. Jorge, I think that you might have a few words that you might want to say, if you'd like to come up. Yeah?
Thank you for having us here. We're excited to be here. We've been on this journey to determine the future of that building, of the building that we have operated now for many, many years. I know some of you have extended history, whether you swam or played basketball. And I think what we made aware, the group that we've been communicating with, is that over the, over time, the needs of the community changed, the capacity of the YMCA shifted, and then we needed to make a decision. And one of the things that we commit when we have assets in a community is a commitment to return the assets to the community for which it was designated. And so we had a, we had conversations about how we might do that, particularly if we could continue to use it, or give it, or hand it over to an organization that would continue to use it to help families and children, and then also to have some discussions about how we might remain as partners through this endeavor. That's led us to this stage. Our board of directors have made a commitment to allow us to move forward with this, should the city agree to this arrangement. And our intent is to turn over the assets. I think we've got an agreement that says $1. If there's, if that's an issue, I think I've got that. I can provide that. But the idea here is to form a partnership as we continue to serve the communities and fam, the community and families of this, of this community. So we're excited for the conversations and how they progress, and we're excited about what this means for the families and children of this community, and how we might continue to work together. We're also, as part of this agreement, talking about how we continue to serve those that want to continue to remain members of the YMCA, and extend some scholarships and some discounts for those individuals that want to continue to operate there. One of the things we're talking about is sometime in the future, a membership at the Norwood Community Center would also facilitate a partnership or a membership at any of our YMCA. So we want to make sure that this continues and move forward. So thank you so much for having us here.
Great, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bonzel.
So, thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to thank again, thank Jorge for being here. I kind of wanted to just quickly talk about just some of the details, like the finer details, and then I'm going to make my motion, and we'll see, you know, if we can go with that. But, you know, there's a couple of things. So it is for $1 that we would purchase it. Well, we did agree to, the mayor has agreed to, but as well, and myself, I was the one that brought this, you know, to him. But in the event that the Norwood Community Center here closes in the next five years, that we would, if we do sell it for any kind, some kind of a profit, we would give them 10% of the proceeds of that sale, if we sell it in the next five years. You know, I think the mayor's commitment, and you know, what I understand too, we have no intentions to do that right now, so, but it seems reasonable, just given how, you know, how valuable the current property is, and it's so centrally located in our community as well, their property. So I just want to make sure that's fully disclosed, that everybody has knew about that beforehand. Jorge also mentioned about discounted membership rates, and so what they're going to do with this agreement is they're also going to offer, the rates that were offered at 2020 at the REL YMCA, they're going to offer those at any of the branches for Norwood residents in 2021. So, you know, a lot of people are having trouble kind of getting out, you know, maybe they're not exercising as much, this is a really good opportunity to, that they can continue these, the discounted rates that we used to have here for at least the next year. And then you'll see in just item 15, the post-closing collaboration, it's basically the city's agreeing to, you know, just collaborate in good faith, essentially work with them on, you know, trying to develop programming for the benefit of Norwood residents, identifying possible partnerships and locations for a new YMCA facility within the city of Norwood, and then providing seller with the continued use of the Y rent-free, if it's available and practical. So these are just kind of some things that the Y had asked for, and honestly, I think these all make perfect sense. I wouldn't want to give away a building and then pay to use it, you know, if it's available to be used. So, so that's that. So with that, I do want to make a motion to have all three readings of the ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Bonzel, second by Mr. Thompson, to have all three readings of the ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or safety service director to enter into a contract with the Greater Cincinnati YMCA to purchase the building at 2039 Sherman Avenue and declaring an emergency. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to just note why the three readings, so this is to approve the purchase agreement, and so this essentially allows the city to enter into that agreement, but it gives, there's time for inspection, there's time for other things. We have gone, gone through it already, Clint's gone through it, but of course, there's additional things that need to be done. So this is not saying that we are absolutely going to purchase it, this is just allowing the mayor to enter into the agreement to purchase it, and then for the mayor to make the decision, if he so chooses, to actually allow us to purchase it. So ultimately, this is in the mayor's hands, and we do appreciate his support, and I definitely want to hear from him at some point, you know, in this conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Geraci.
I guess I'll start off by being controversial with this one. I don't agree with the three readings tonight, because for one, I'm just now hearing of all this stuff. I'm just now hearing that we're going to give 25% of the sale of this community center, if we sell it in the next five years, and whatever, 10%, 20%, whatever it is. I'm hearing all this brand-new tonight, and we're having three readings to purchase a property that I'm hearing everything for brand-new. I heard one vague presentation from Mr. Bonzel at Parks and Public Buildings hearing, or meeting. I don't think we need to do three readings tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to clarify, it was, it's 10%, and it's if we sell it in five years, which is saying we don't have intentions of doing, but it's, to me, it's a good faith measure, just saying, hey, we're not going to try to, you know, make a huge profit off this endeavor. We're taking their generosity, their, it's a severe generosity, in my opinion. It's this huge, they're selling us this building for a dollar with the hope that we're going to do the best thing with it, we're going to revitalize it for the community. We're sitting right now in our current rec center, that has never been and will never be designed to be an actual functioning rec center. The amount of money that we could spend and utilize into the Y here, we could triple that, quadruple that number, and that would never turn this place into any sort of valid rec center. This opportunity is huge. For us to not have these three readings and do this is us pretty much telling the residents and the kids and the youth in Norwood that, hey, man, this isn't just that big, this is not that important. And to me, that would be a slap in the face. So I'm urging everybody, let's motion, and let's vote and have these three readings, let's vote and pass this. And we got an opportunity right here to do something really, really, really nice for the members of Norwood, and their children, and I think that we need to focus on that. The little nuances in there, I'm not worried about that, because the opportunity cost greatly outweighs 10% of what we would get for this building.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. DiNardo.
Yeah, I thought it was a really good presentation, that the collaboration between Mr. Bonzel and Mr. Kelch demonstrated at the Parks and Rec, I don't know, it was four weeks ago or something like that. The one thing that we did talk about, though, that I, I don't know if it's for anybody to comment on, but we talked about how taking it on was, it seemed collectively, or for three of us, or four of us, a good move to make for the course of, you know, a year or two. But there was this interim period where we'd have to maintain it, now let's just basically make sure it doesn't go and get, get left alone, and get in trouble, or deteriorate at all, but there's still some core, sort of like maintenance costs. And we discussed that it wasn't quantified, it, we were kind of alluding to it not being material, but I think, maybe for you to comment, does us entering in this agreement, I guess, get in the way of us finding out kind of what those costs might be, just to maintain it before we start making decisions on real capital or infrastructure changes? Which is great, I definitely want to move forward, but we did, if you remember, we talked about like, hey, let's take six months to see how this revenue starts to play out before we start making big, big investments.
Mr. DiNardo, who were you asking that question to?
I, really, to James, because I know, I asked him that at the meeting, but for anybody else.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Mr. President. I will just say, I mean, there are some costs to that, to heating any building. You know, I'd say they're probably not super exorbitant, however, they have, the Y has been extremely open, they provide us building blueprints and floor plans, and anything, anything that we have asked for, any kind of tours, we've done multiple tours of the building, like they have been more than happy to provide. So this agreement, again, it doesn't mean that we are taking possession of the building tomorrow, this says that we take possession of the building before March 31st. So there's plenty of time, if there are additional questions, or additional concerns, or like that, that can still be addressed, so, and they can provide some of that information.
Yeah, thanks for answering that. I guess it's just a, a comment that, yeah, with saying yes to this, I think it's a great move. I'm really happy that you guys are here and making this happen for us. I just want to reiterate, I think collectively, we didn't want to actually do moves like elevators, kitchens, the stuff that we would need and want to put in for the first six months, until we let kind of the revenue story play itself out. So hopefully that gets heard.
Thank you, Mr. DiNardo. Mr. Geraci.
All right, I guess I'll get backlash on this one, too. So, I mean, if we're going to let this sit for six months to a year without doing anything, trying to find the capital to make the improvements in it, then we take about a year to make the improvements on it, we're not looking at, we're looking at not having this for about two years-ish, it sounds like. And Mr. Bonzel, I can see you getting a little, you know, angry over there with my comments here, but I'm trying to be realistic. Mr. Kelch had said this is a great revenue source, and, or something to that aspect, where we can make our money, and, you know, the 10% really wasn't, isn't going to matter. Have we done some sort of financial analysis on how much we could potentially bring in? What are we going to charge for, for people to utilize that place? Are we charging people to utilize that place? You know, what, there's questions that I could come up with, that I had no idea that we even were bringing this to the table this month. We have until March, it sounds like, to at least decide.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Anyone else? Mr. Kelch.
I just, if I could, Mr. President, through your chair, Mr. Geraci, clarify, I was not talking about us making revenue off this opportunity cost of actually having a viable, meant-to-be rec center for the city of Norwood, which we currently do not have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Put your hand up over here, I'm sorry. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the YMCA for this, this opportunity, and for working with us on this. It's a great opportunity for the city, and I appreciate you coming here and, and being part of the experience, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, when, first of all, a little history, I got my first kiss in that YMCA. So, and that was, you know, we used to go in there and spend the night and play basketball and swim, and it's a great place, and I've always felt like that place has, is Norwood's anyway, I felt like it was ours, anyway. So I'm very excited about, about this opportunity. However, I do, I do realize that when someone says that they will give you something, that you, you probably better look into that, because that's, that's not exactly going to mean give it. So that's going to be costly involved, but I've always felt like this YMCA was a part of Norwood, and so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't accept this, this deal, and be grateful and happy, and I think our citizens are going to be real, be welcoming to this. So thanks, that's my, my thought, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did just want to note two, two things. One, I mean, this agreement was in our council package that were delivered, should have been delivered on Friday, some people I got them on Saturday, but it wasn't like the agreement was just placed in front of, you know, tonight. The second thing is, I did just want to acknowledge again, Mr. Gabbard and Mr. Kelch's role in this, too, they've both been very supportive behind the scenes, you know, and given me some counsel on this, too, you know, and thoughts on this, so it's been very appreciative. And, and yeah, so it's, I think it's a really good agreement, and I do hope we do all three readings. It's not because we have to, we could, we could get away with doing two readings tonight, and we would have time if we passed it at the next council meeting. The reason to do all three, though, is so that we can kind of give just some, you know, we can start doing some more planning. So as I, Mr. Kelch, I think is going to be a big driver on, on the council side of this, as we look to the operational plans, and look to how we best maximize this for the citizens. So, I mean, the three readings is tonight, again, it doesn't have to happen, I just think it just provides some more assurances that we're going to move forward, and allows us to start making, taking action and making plans.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Geraci.
So I guess you brought up, you brought up the operational plans and things like that. If you go and buy a house, and you go look at the house, and look through the house, you go, oh, hey, you know, let's paint this room, let's paint that room, let's move this wall, let's take this wall down. And you do this all before you buy a house. We didn't do any of this stuff before we looked at even throwing a contract out here to purchase this. We have a very vague idea of what we need to have in there, based on what we have in here, and yet we're looking to go into this contract and accept these terms without having an actual plan of what we want to do inside that building.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Mr. DiNardo.
It's a dollar.
Plus 10%.
Mr. Geraci just throwing that out. Gentlemen, maintain our decorum here, please, thank you.
Right.
Follow the rules. Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so it is, like, like Mr. DiNardo said, it's a dollar, it's an opportunity that we're very lucky to get. I just want to emphasize how lucky we are to get this opportunity, to even be discussing this here tonight. And all of these operational plans will be happening in the committee that you are on with me, Mr. DiNardo, Mr. Thompson, so we're going to have a big role to play in kind of what's going where, what are we going to keep, how's this thing going to work? Okay, I mean, this is a huge opportunity, we're losing sight of that, we need to get out of our own way at a certain point, and allow people to come to us with things like this, that want to do good things for us, with us. This is a simple thing, this is a no-brainer, this is a huge deal, man. Like, we need to get out of our own way, allow this to happen for the people in Norwood, and then get to work planning and working on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Geraci.
And two readings tonight, at the minimum. Close that down somehow.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Mr. Gabbard.
Mr. Geraci, I understand where you're coming from, and not want to try to rush something, but they're not asking for $500,000, they're asking for a dollar. And when somebody offers you a building like that, that's centrally located in our city, and has the, the, that has the projections of the things that we could potentially do with out of that building, for our own citizens, for a dollar, you don't smack them in the face and say, wait another two weeks, and then come back, and maybe we'll vote on it. We go ahead and give them the three votes, if you don't want to vote, vote no, I think we got six others, let's vote.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Any other discussion? Good point. Motion on the floor by Mr. Bonzel, second by Mr. Thompson, to have all three readings. Mrs. Williams, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, the motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or safety service director to enter into a contract with the Greater Cincinnati YMCA to purchase the building at 2039 Sherman Avenue and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or safety service director to enter into a contract with the Greater Cincinnati YMCA to purchase the building at 2039 Sherman Avenue and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or safety service director to enter into a contract with the Greater Cincinnati YMCA to purchase the building at 2039 Sherman Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Gabbard.
Make a motion if we pass this one.
Motion by Mr. Gabbard, second by Mr. Kelch. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
No.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting, we have six ayes, one no, motion passes. Moving on to our next presentation with PLK.
My name is Nick Lingandveldt, I know many of you, we have met a few times before. We recently took our final plan development through Planning Commission, and now we're presenting those to you today. So a few months back, you approved our preliminary plan, and I'm going to go over some changes that we have made since that preliminary, and where the plan is today. As of right now, we have our general contract pretty much ready to go. We're currently in the bidding stage, we're probably 30 to 60 days out from having a bid, constructing bids, and right now, our goal is still to start late spring, early summer. So we're tracking pretty well. We recently presented at the Finance Committee, the incentive package that we're working on, the city's working on directly with the school board, and that will be forthcoming, I'm guessing, in the next month or two. So, the plan you have in front of you here today is the final plan currently for Phase 1. Everything in color is Phase 1. I like this, because you see the clouded buildings, those are what we have classified as Phase 2. The major changes that we have made to this site plan since the last time you have seen it, the number one thing we did was we detached the clock tower from the building, making it a focal point. We restored the turnaround on Park Avenue, and we're working on some type of fountain feature to give a nod back to the original building that was originally built there. We also took the brewery and taproom and have now moved it centrally located on the property. So if I go back here, you can actually see it's in that central part. When we started working with some of our retail consultants, what was brought up to us is we were actually making two retail hubs instead of one central hub for everybody to go to. The public parking will be located on the first floor of the factory building, which is the big building on the left. Floors 2 and 3 will be resident parking, and floor 4 will actually be residential. So as you're leaving that factory building, it will put you out right next to the market hall, right next to the brewery, and it kind of centrally locates you within the site. This is a point of reference that everybody knows as well, we have just shy of 700 spaces planned for Phase 1, and right now, our initial count of residential units is about 253. We will have the capacity to bring on more, but we're going to have to balance that with parking demands and needs of the residents as we go. One other thing, sorry. Okay, the next thing we did, if you remember the original site plan, whoops, go back one, sorry. The family park was actually on the backside of parking garage, we had now moved back to the middle, just on the backside of that taproom brewery. What that allows us to do is you can actually get where it's set, you locate it with your family, it's a safer location, and it's off the main traffic patterns. The other thing is, we had originally planned, or were trying, hoping to build on top of that factory building. In our structural engineer's analysis, what came back to us is we actually have to reinforce that entire building with steel, because they didn't have the right plans to prove out that it was strong enough. So as much as we know it's strong and it's not going there, if we can't physically prove it, and there were no plans because of the age of the building, we would have to reinforce the building. It became two, it was very expensive to build on top of that, so what we've elected to do is do two-story lofted units on that fourth floor, because there's 22-foot ceilings there, so those actually look down at the park and the other sides. We had originally a 16-unit townhome pad in the middle, where you now see that clouded white building. We've actually elected to change that, we've pushed kind of what we call the townhome pad to the right now, and that building in the middle's now, we're classifying that as a mixed-use building. The reason why is, when we went out to some office brokers, and we've been working on their listing agreements, they've actually told us that's the most valuable part of the site, and they're right. When you're right next to that taproom, when you're right on the park, if you're somebody else, it doesn't make sense to just put 16 units there, when you have capacity and demand that would actually make it more valuable, not only for us, but for the city from a tax revenue standpoint in the long run. So what we've done is we've actually pulled that offline for now, and you'll probably see that coming 24 to 36 months out. Finally, on the bottom left, we've done in addition to the food innovation hub, allowing us to go closer to 19,000 square feet. It will allow 18 specific users, and we're hoping to employ about 80 to 100 people in that building by the time it's up and operational. So everything you see in front of you right now in the green is what our Phase One plan is. This is what you are proving. Everything in white is Phase Two. That is not included in here. What that includes is your two main office buildings along the highway, because we're assuming that's going to need some tenant-specific needs whenever that market allows, and then the buildings to the north of what is the factory building. Right now, we've slated some residential buildings there, but we do have a user that's potentially interested in this space that we've been talking to. So again, those two pads in the white, when they're actually developed, will come at a later date. Another thing that we talked about last time we were here on the preliminary is we did not see the materials. So what we wanted you to know is, what will the materials be, and is this the quality product that we have promised you? This will include steel, brick, glass, wood, concrete, fiber cement, and other high-quality materials. We wanted you to know that we have specifically called out there will be no vinyl, and we know it's called EPHIS, which is a type of insulation siding. Those are more cost-effective materials, but we, given the quality and the stature of the product, we want you to know we purposely excluded those, and when you vote, we will not be allowed to use those in Phase One without coming back to you. So, we want you to know that this product that we are building is going to be a level above our competition. So what is this final plan? Roughly 250 initial units that we built over the first 24 months. The 19,000-square-foot food innovation hub, the taproom, about 20,000 square foot of retail. Some of that's in the garage, some of that's in the clock tower building, and then we also have an additional pad out front on T Street. And that also includes the main stages, the dog park, a family park, parking garage, and restoration of the clock tower. So on the restoration of the clock tower, so everybody is aware, what we've done right now is, we are fully planning to restore the clock tower. We've got some different opinions on what we're going to do there. Right now, our plan is call for the elevator to go through the middle. What that does, it actually removes the original clock mechanism, and we'd like to not have to do that if we don't have to. So we're exploring what those options are, but this does have a restoration of the clock tower. The public component, the observation deck, we're still working through, but that actual structure will not change from what you're seeing today. So what is the construction value of this project? Right now, our cost estimate is put Phase One at roughly $80 million. And Phase One B, which is that other building on the park, there's well as 72 units down on Kennelworth Avenue at about $18 million. So right now, Phase One alone is right at $100 million. That will be spent by us over the first 24 to 36 months. Phase Two will be the office pads as well as that other pad to the north of the parking garage, estimating at about $59 million. So all in, we're looking at just over about $150 to $160 million project when this is fully built out. And that's at today's construction cost. The one thing I wanted to point out to you as well is we're working with the Port Authority, which many of you voted on a couple months back. Part of our agreement with the Port Authority is to actually have an inclusion target. So we've done this on other projects, but we want to make sure we're targeting certain businesses that need a leg up for any help. That's typically about 25% minority businesses, 7% women-owned businesses, and 30% small businesses. So, what that target means is it is our goal to hit that. Our current project, we're tracking to about 50%, but ultimately, the Port sets that goal, and they have an inclusion partner that we have to be accountable to every month and show that we've got certain business, we're doing everything we can to achieve those. Finally, what's the projected impact for Phase One and Phase Two? Right now, we're looking at about 180 construction jobs over about a 24-month span. The office buildings, we've worked with jobs of high on those calculations. It's roughly 400 employees if we do about a 200,000-square-foot total build, one building or two. Full-time payroll on those office buildings, when they get, there's about $20 million annually at today's dollars. Part-time jobs, whether that's retail, market hall, whatever, we're looking at about 100 to 150. We've estimated a low. And the retail sales in Phase One, they're putting about $12 to $15 million a year in retail sales. With that, you guys do have the full packet, and I just wanted to give you a high level of where everything stands and take any questions. If you want me to wait, I can do that too.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you. Can you talk about the mixed-use building? Like, when you say mixed-use, can you just kind of indicate what you mean by mixed-use?
So ground-floor retail, upper floors will be office residential, whatever the capacity the market is. So when I say mixed-use, it's more than, so that's, yeah, it's just ground-floor retail that actually fits, fronts onto the park with whatever, what do we, office or residential above.
And that's one, because it's grayed out, that's one where you would have to come back to the city for a site plan, like an amendment?
No, as long as we don't change the pad, the capacity is already in your approval. But we've spelled out that it's roughly an 80,000 to 100,000-square-foot building on your site plan. And it says, we could go, I believe it's up to 100 residential units or X amount of square feet of office. I believe it's 80 to 100,000 square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
So moving on to what now is H, which is public hearings for the playing card partners. I hereby call this public hearing to order. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the POK playing card partners?
Good evening. Pastor Sonny James. I just want to commend the city, commend each and every one of you who have taken time to do your due diligence. I just, many of you know, one of my press issues is diversity and inclusion. And man, I just got to, you know, I've met with Nick and Colleen, we've had conversations, and every step of the way, you know, the things that they've drafted, the things that they've said, even their heart to make sure that inclusion is a part of this. And guys, just from a city perspective and a resident perspective, we've got to get behind something like this because it opens the door of opportunity for minorities to actually be treated equal, to be seen as equal, and to be given an honest shot at the table right from the beginning. We just cannot look over that with the climate that we live in today. So I just personally want to thank this organization. I want to thank those of you with the city that have just really embraced it. They've done a fantastic job. And if they hadn't, I'm sure some of you know, I would probably be saying so. They've done a phenomenal job, and I just want to say to the residents of Norwood, this is exactly where I believe God has taken us. It's taken us to another level. God bless you all. Keep supporting it, keep supporting each other. God bless.
Thank you, Pastor James. Anyone else speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Please come forward. If not, we'll close this public hearing. We will move on to what is now Item I, Request to Address Counsel. We have three this evening. The first speaker, Mr. Jay Andrews.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here to speak about the Blossom Way and the benefits it will bring to Norwood. In 18 months, basically, the Blossom Way will be done. It'll stretch from Martin Luther King in Redding Road out to Red Bank Road near the driver's license. 100% funded, it's a done deal. There's nothing that's going to stop this thing from happening. Once the main trail is done, we will be looking at connections. As far as Norwood is concerned, we're looking at either going up Victory Parkway or using the abandoned railroad tracks on the west side of Norwood. To be quite honest, the west, the tracks on the west side of Norwood are the best option. It impacts the most people, it's really going to have an impact on Norwood. The other document is an economic benefit study. It was done by UC DAP, and this is, this was done in 2015. And it basically, if you look at the last page of that study, it shows that the houses within 3,500 feet of the Blossom Way will rise in value by $8,941. If you take that $8,941 and apply it to the 6,000 houses south of the Norwood Latrim, you're talking the economic benefit of $53 million. That was as an increase in residential property values. Finally, I'd like to bring to your attention, Norwood really is the heart of this project. It can be the potential to be the heart of the commercial district. If you think about the Blossom Way, it goes from here, it goes across I-71, it goes along Blossom Road, but the trail is on one side of the road, and the bars and restaurants are on the other side. It's primarily a residential area. And then it goes east, past Paxton into Oak Park. The other direction, it basically does not go through commercial areas either. So Norwood is really the center of this project. Of the houses within 3,500 feet of the entire Blossom Way, which goes through nine different neighborhoods, Norwood represents 60% of the houses within 3,500 feet of the Blossom Way. So really, you play a very key part in this project. So I hope as we move forward over the next few years, that we get your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. You mentioned the railroad tracks on the west of Norwood. I'm having a hard time hearing. Can you, can you explain again now what you were talking about on the, is that future plans?
Hopkins Avenue.
Yes, sir. So, that's a future, okay. Does train still run on it? That doesn't, that's not being used, is it?
No, it's been 20 years.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Yeah, Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, I think, yeah, and I think the point that he was trying to make, I think that they're looking to kind of eventually get some buy-in from the city. I mean, not necessarily dollars, but like, do we, is that what we want for that area, for that track back there? I mean, eventually, I mean, you're already seeing it kind of get parceled off. I think the Monarch Construction, I think, you know, has leased or something part of it. There's a parking lot right above the old skating rink that's got part of it, right? So, it'd probably be in the city's best interest if we would like to see, potentially see a bike trail connect from Xavier's kind of network to Hopkins Avenue, that's essentially. But it, but there could be a vision that could go all the way to Millcrest Park. We want to see that, and we really should think about acting and start looking at this because, you know, somebody might eventually approach the railroad with the property on Crossley. There's a big field right there, and then the tracks kind of come really, kind of start up close to the street. Somebody might approach the railroad with some great thing to put a, you know, a bunch of houses there or something, and they might go for it. And so if the city doesn't act on, we could potentially lose the opportunity, if that's something that we want to do. So, I think that's part of why Jay's here is for that. So, I mean, just kind of know that. If we wanted to discuss that further in the committee, it might be worthy of that, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Our next request to address counsel is Ms. Kirsten James.
Good evening. I'm Kirsten James of 1830 Hopkins Avenue. I'm the executive director of Elevations After School Enrichment Program here in Norwood. I just wanted to give a brief recap of the March Toward the Future, which was a peaceful march here in Norwood that we held on January the 15th of 2021, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s vision of racial equality and unification within our country. I want to thank all of those who helped make the event the success that it was, first giving honor to God, to the Norwood administration, to the police department and fire department for assisting us and supporting us and making this event a wonderful event, as well as all the residents that came out to participate with us, to our community partners, including Holly Johnson of Xavier University. We are grateful to her and to her students for partnering with us. We want to thank also Alice Rerica of the Norwood School Board and Joe Miller of Norwood City Schools for coming to march with us. We want to thank also the pastors who came out, including Pastor Peter Mingo of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference who came to support. A big shout-out to the youth who led the march, the youth of Elevations as well as the youth in the community that came to support. They are definitely our way to the future, and we need to follow their example. I want to thank Lennywell James, who wants to be the very first African-American police officer in the history of Norwood. There are already plans underway for the 2022 March, which is to be held on Saturday, January 15th, and we are asking for the city's support for that as well. This was a wonderful event. We had a lot of positive feedback. All of you received a collage of photos that were taken, some of the photos that were taken of the march, and that was a token of our appreciation to you all for your support. We also made presentations at the march for individuals within our community who have shown support for racial reconciliation. We made, excuse me, presentations to the Norwood Police Department and to the Fire Department. They both received certificates of appreciation that look like this, and they read as follows: "In recognition of publicly supporting March Toward the Future and efforts that bring about healing and racial reconciliation within the community, awarded this day, January 15th of 2021." We have a special presentation we'd like to give to Mr. Chris Kelch, who was not able to be there with us on the day of the event, but we'd like to present you with an award tonight, and it reads as follows. "This certificate is awarded to Chris Kelch in recognition of publicly supporting minority-led initiatives that bring about more racial reconciliation within the community." We just want to say thank you very much. We also made a very special presentation that we are planning to make each year for one individual that goes above and beyond their efforts to exemplify racial reconciliation and unification within our community. And our first award, we presented to Mr. Michael Gabbert, is the March Toward the Future Award. It says, "Your actions to exemplify and promote more inclusion and racial equity are recognized and greatly appreciated. Thank you for boldly prioritizing issues that further unite our community." And we greatly appreciate you, Michael, for your support, and this is what his certificate looks like. We already gave him a certificate, but this is what it looks like. If you'd like to take a look at it later. So I want to thank you all for your support, hoping that you will help us to make this an annual event in honor of racial reconciliation for our community. And I want to thank, a big shout-out to Pastor James as well, for spearheading and organizing the march as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. James. Our next request to address counsel, Pastor Sonny James.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, beautiful Norwood, Ohio. Let me first of all, wow, can't believe it. Let me, let me first of all, just tell you guys. When people look at us on the outside, you know, they kind of formulate their own opinion of Norwood. Most of that opinion comes from the old head that used to run rampant. But I got to tell you, and Norwood is a beautiful place to live. Norwood is a beautiful place to be. And where we still struggle is in giving every person, regardless of their creed, regardless of who they're connected with, we still at times struggle with the who's who and who we're connected to. I want to personally just thank each and every person that put their heart on the line to say, black people do matter. And we've got to begin to get to the point where we can boldly say, "Black," and that we can boldly set aside opportunities, not just for those that we hand-pick. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "I have a dream." We are a part of that dream. We are the vision that God gave them. And although we may have disparities between us, I believe the day is coming when people all over the city of Cincinnati and all over the world will be able to look at this small community and say, "That community was once plagued by racism from the top down." But look at those little bitty folk coming together, pressing through the issues at hand. And if Norwood, Ohio, can do it, so can we. I want to give a personal shout-out to the Elevations youth that led this wonderful historical march. We're getting phone calls back to back to back. During the march, people were reaching over outside of windows, yelling and screaming. They were so excited. And as Kirsten James teaches the youth in the chant, the marchers marched on the streets of Norwood, and the chant would say, "Be the change." And all of the participants... would say, "Be the change!" And all of the participants, "On one accord, no division, black, white, young, not so young. Be the change. I am the change." It was electrifying to be a part of it. I want to just personally say, as we move forward as a community, we may still have issues, but marching on the streets of Norwood together shows us what we can be together as one. I was chuckling with some of the pastors that were there, and I said, "You know, if they ever wanted to get me to shut up, this was probably a darn good start." We are the future. Next year's march is going to be fantabulocious. Please plan to participate. And as I close, I want to also give a shout out to Mr. Perez. I hadn't, I don't know why with my eye surgeries I didn't remember him, but a year ago we met, and our church is part of a network church at the Y, and we used to meet there. And as we move forward with these other great projects, make sure we keep minorities abreast and apart. God bless you all. We do have a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful surprise coming. You ain't seen nothing yet. Get ready for our next big event. Build it black. God bless you guys. Peace.
Thank you, Pastor James. That's all the requests to address council that we had this evening. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Item J, Reports of Standing Committees of Council, J1, Economic Development Meeting, January 19th, 2021. Mr. Gabbard.
Dated 1/19/21 to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Economic Development, to whom was referred Norwood Together, Presentation of Montgomery Road, and then also PLK. Begging to submit the following report. Mary C. Miller and Steve Johns gave a presentation on the Montgomery Road redevelopment plan that was put together through a grant funding over the past year. And then PLK gave a presentation. Nick and Colleen gave an update and a quick overview of any and all changes and the economic, the economic impact that it will make here in our city. Respectfully submitted, Michael Gabbert, Chairperson, Mr. Eric DiNardo, Mr. Eric Thompson, Mr. James Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Mr. DiNardo.
Make a motion that we receive the committee report.
Motion by Mr. DiNardo to receive and file. Mr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. Motion passes. Item J2, Finance Committee Meeting, January 19th, 2021. Mr. DiNardo.
Yes, thanks. The committee report for the Finance Budget and Audit Committee, the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, the Committee of Finance Budget and Audit, to whom it was referred, firstly, the TIF framework for PLK. The Rookwood Exchange TIF had a discussion on the extension, specifically the extension, and then performed elements of the fourth quarter of 2020 financial review. So I'm just going to kind of read from our report. That might be easier. And the first one, the TIF framework for PLK, which is now Factory 52 Project, we reviewed the changes of the Phase 1 site plans that was last presented to council, many of which we saw here tonight. We saw the current estimates for Phase 1 and 1B combined for around $100 million, and noted a request for a TIF to support a portion of the $20 million of infrastructure that would be required upfront. This layout was a preliminary step for both the Finance Committee and the President of the School Board, who was in attendance for information purposes. The Finance Committee would like to formally request that notice be sent to the School Board, asking for a proposal to be put in place and evaluated. The committee considered the TIF and CRA elements presented by PLK, noting that we should, we should consider requiring guaranteed deadlines for certain project phases to be completed, and that earning, we had also had a discussion, that earning tax alone would unlikely be the only driving benefit to the city, and that there were other elements of benefit that we could enjoy. With all that discussion in mind, the committee recommended that the city be supportive of moving forward and evaluating a formal proposal that must also be approved by the School Board. The second section of the discussion revolved around the Rookwood Exchange TIF extension, and I dubbed this "The Confirmation of Understanding." We heard from Pat Woodside and Andy Bressard on confirming what the extension offers, the timing, that the extension was brought as an opportunity to the city by them, and that so, this was solely looking at the extension itself, and it was not at the detriment of the schools. The committee heard from the School Board President, as he commented, that there is a growing call to partnership between himself and the President of Council to partner on TIF and other project financing items. This was collectively agreed as a positive step by the members of the committee. So thanks, Ken. The third element was a fourth quarter financial review. Just a note, we are required, at a minimum, to do financial reviews quarterly. It involved a look at our cash position, our statement of cash position, revenue and expenses, and then a newly added item was the bank reconciliation, but I'll get to that in a second. So focusing on the statement of cash position, the committee discussed the 1.67 million ending cash balance in the street fund, and commented that the focus on road repair and paving should continue at the high rate it's at, given we are in a financial, finally in a position to do so so aggressively. This times well with the streets audit that was discussed by the mayor and the strategic plan, and, and the strategic plan that was presented for Montgomery Road, which is in desperate need of fixes. It was commented that the prior council and the finance, and the prior finance chair's efforts were bearing fruit, as evidenced by the street fund's ending cash position. The 6.47 million ending balance for the general fund, with COVID relief money that was collected, helped the ending position in funding, in funding third quarter and fourth quarter expenses. Finally, focus was paid to the water and sewer funds. We also discussed whether smart meters, smart meters could be in some portion covered by these funds and return more on their investment in a shortened timeframe. Referring back to the bank reconciliation, which we were obligated to review, we did not perform that review at the request of the State Audit Department, as this was not ready in time, given the changeover in accounting software. The timing of that changeover didn't allow our treasurer to process it, but he has since emailed me saying that was available. So we'll bring that on the next time that we meet in a Finance Committee, just so we can make sure that that box is ticked and we're performing our obligations appropriately. We plan also in that meeting to review the 2020 Auditor's Report, and we'll set the next committee meeting within a month or so.
Thank you, Mr. DiNardo. May I have a motion to receive and file the report? Mr. Thompson.
Motion to receive and file.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Kelsch.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelsch. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. Motion passes. Moving on to Item K1, Third Reading of Ordinances Resolutions. Resolution authorizing the City of Norwood to purchase and use employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy through public entities pool, PEP. Mr. Thompson.
We have the third reading of this ordinance for resolutions, sorry.
Motion by Mr. Thompson. May I have a second? Mr. Bonzel. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. The motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have the third reading?
Resolution authorizing the City of Norwood to purchase and use employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy through public entities pool.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we approve, or pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to move and pass the ordinance. A resolution, forgive me. May I have a second? Mr. Kelsch. Second by Mr. Kelsch. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. The motion passes. Moving on to introductory reading of ordinances and resolutions, Item M2, Ordinance to Change Appropriations for the Year 2021 and Declaring an Emergency. Mr. DiNardo.
Would you like to have all three readings, please?
Motion by Mr. DiNardo. Do you have all three readings? Mr. Bonzel.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Bonzel. Any discussion? Mr. DiNardo.
Can I just give a brief comment? The appropriations that we saw were set at the, based on the tax budget, like May or June. You probably remember in our June meeting, we talked about how we set the appropriations based on the tax budget, and it was unchanged from the plan, and that was intentional. We now have a certificate of estimated resources, I think it's called, and that's due at the end of January, and so these appropriations get ourselves set up for Jim to do that, Mr. Stitt to do that.
Thank you, Mr. DiNardo. Mr. Geraci?
Why are we moving money in the fire administration accounts?
Do you have a question to Mr. DiNardo? I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Having gotten each element of this, we'll do that when it comes time to plan. This is to meet what the state auditor, what he's discussed with the state auditor, and they require in certain appropriations to meet levels, so that there's no zeros in the fund balances.
Thank you, Mr. DiNardo. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, a lot of, so basically what's happening is the, just ring by the home, so we're increasing appropriations in the 7,400 key for the fire administration, that's fixed expense, and we're decreasing, so it's $28,710, and then we're decreasing that same amount for materials and supplies. Normally, these things come up when there's some type of, essentially, they were budgeting something in materials and supplies, and state auditors or the auditor's office feel like it's better to come out of the fixed expense key, but ultimately, it's the same money being spent in the fire administration key, it's just being moved to essentially a different account to, usually for better accounting, so. And then the other items are just being decreased, so there's nothing else being increased. It's just in the fire administration key, we're reducing an amount for materials and supplies, and we're increasing in fixed expense the same amount. So all of it's still being spent in the fire department.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Mr. Geraci?
Okay, let me try to rephrase that, because I knew I didn't phrase that correctly the first time. What is the fixed expense for the fire administration? What is that being spent on? For? Anybody can answer.
I'd have to ask Jim, but do you know?
I did not know why that change was made. Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I don't know this specific $28,000, but traditionally, the 7,400 key to fixed expenses utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. The motion passes. May we have all three readings? Mrs. Williams?
Ordinance to Change Appropriations for the Year 2021 and Declaring an Emergency. Ordinance to Change Appropriations for the Year 2021 and Declaring an Emergency. Ordinance to Change Appropriations for the Year 2021 and Declaring an Emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to pass the ordinance. Mr. DiNardo.
Second.
Second by Mr. DiNardo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
No.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting, we have six ayes, one no. Motion passes. Moving on to Item M3, A Resolution Celebrating the Month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of Norwood, Ohio. Mr. Thompson.
We move, we have all three readings of this resolution, with the first reading including the be resolved portion of the resolution itself. It's a pretty long resolution, so I don't want to read the whole thing, but the be resolved section with the first reading would be great. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Thompson to have all three readings. Mr. Brayden.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Mr. Thompson.
I think what Mrs. and Mrs. James and Pastor Sunny referred to earlier is racial reconciliation. It's in a lot of people's minds these days, and as well as unity needed within our country. And I realize this is just a symbol, but hopefully it starts some dialogue and starts some healing here in the city of Norwood. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. Motion passes. May we have all three readings? Mrs. Williams?
A Resolution Celebrating the Month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of Norwood, Ohio. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio, that it acknowledges that all people in the City of Norwood are recipients of the wealth of history provided by black culture, recognizes the importance of Black History Month as an opportunity to reflect on the complex history of the United States, including the City of Norwood, while remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead, acknowledges the significance of Black History Month as an important opportunity to commemorate the tremendous contributions of African-Americans to the history of the United States, including the City of Norwood, encourages the celebration of Black History Month to provide a continuing opportunity for all people in the City of Norwood to learn from the past and understand the experiences that have shaped the United States, agrees that while the United States began as a divided country, the United States must honor the contribution of all pioneers in the United States who have helped to ensure the legacy of the great United States, and move forward with purpose, united tirelessly as a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and declares February 2021 to be Black History Month in Norwood, Ohio, to encourage our residents to learn about black history. A resolution celebrating the month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of Norwood, Ohio. A resolution celebrating the month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of Norwood, Ohio.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Gabbert.
I make a motion that we pass this resolution.
Motion by Mr. Gabbert to pass this resolution. Mr. Brayden.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Please, Mr. Gabbert?
Yeah, I, Mr. Thompson, you bring this, and I want to personally thank you for that. I, I think this is a great, great tool for us, and we should be recognizing the Unity March, the first one that we had, and to do these kind of things. And I tell people all the time, I sit in this chair, excuse me, I sit in this chair because I have two grandkids, one of which is mixed-raced, and the other one has two mommies. And I want them to grow up in this city and feel like they're not judged, and that when they grow up, it will be a city of more unity, and a city that they'll want to raise their families in as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbert. Anyone else? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also want to thank Mr. Thompson for bringing this forward. You know, I, I almost think that, you know, it doesn't go far enough in acknowledging just kind of the sins of our past, and, you know, there's, there's so much evidence of our, in our current city, of, of things the way they are because of, I'd just say racism in the past. I mean, there's a park literally in our city that was established because there were going to be black people that were going to set up residence there. And so the city decided to eminent domain it. It was called something else at the time, but it was much easier at the time. And they bought, bought the property, got a judge to approve it, and it was done. And that, and that's bought, bought the property, got a judge to approve it, and it was done, and that solved that problem that they perceived, you know, to have. And, you know, I'll just say that there's, I appreciate this ordinance, and I think there's so much work to do, and, you know, I appreciate everybody that's fighting for that, and, yeah, just thank you for bringing it, and I think there's just more to do.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Mrs. Williams, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, resolution passes. Moving on to item M. 4, ordinance approving the final planned unit development, PUD, planned for the Factory 52 project for the real property owned by Playing Card Partners known as 4590 Beach Street, County Auditor's Book 651, Page 0019, Parcel 0125, located within a light manufacturing M1 zone district with a PUD overlay and declaring emergency. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we have all three readings of this ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel that we have all three readings of this ordinance. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gabbard. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you so much. So, the reason for the three readings is that, you know, they're, they're on a construction timeline. We, there was a 30-day notice given for the public hearing, and so, you know, all of us council members, public, you know, there was all, there was an opportunity for us to get feedback or to ask questions during that time. No matter how you vote up or down just on the final thing, you know, doing the three readings is going to help them to at least achieve what they need to do to know if they have the approval to move forward or not.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? We have a motion by Mr. Bonzel, second by Mr. Gabbard, to have all three readings. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Ordinance approving the final planned unit development planned for the Factory 52 project for the real property owned by Playing Card Partners known as 4590 Beach Street, County Auditor's Book 651, Page 19, Parcel 125, located within a light manufacturing M1 zone district with a PUD overlay and declaring an emergency. Ordinance approving the final planned unit development plan for the Factory 52 project for the real property owned by Playing Card Partners known as 4590 Beach Street, County Auditor's Book 651, Page 19, Parcel 125, located within a light manufacturing M1 zone district with a PUD overlay and declaring an emergency. Ordinance approving the final planned unit development planned for the Factory 52 project for the real property owned by Playing Card Partners known as 4590 Beach Street, County Auditor's Book 651, Page 19, Parcel 125, located within a light manufacturing M1 zone district with a PUD overlay and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to pass the ordinance. Mr. Kelch.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelch. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to again thank the applicants for being here tonight. I think we can all be extremely excited about the project. I know there's been a lot of work that's gone into it, and we know it's going to be high-quality. You know, I'll still raise concerns about ensuring that we have, you know, office and/or hotel uses in those two lots, and even in that multi-use building, I think it's important that, as feasible as possible, we make sure there's office there too, so that's, I mean, my goal and what we'd like to see. But I just want to thank you all for, again, for all the work that's gone in. I think that in two to three years, when the thing is done, maybe part of it's done a little earlier, but I think it's just going to be something that we are going to all be so proud of. And I remember when I first moved to Norwood, you know, I got a few, not a ton, but I got a few people like, "Oh, Norwood, Norwood." I was like, "Yeah, Norwood, like, place is awesome," you know? And, and we've shaken that, I mean, that's been shaken a lot, you know, as we can tell just by housing values and by other things, but I think this is going to be one of the biggest things that happens when it comes to that change of identity, is having Factory 52 here, and so I just think it's just going to be so exciting for the entire city. Yeah, and I'm looking forward to it, so I'm going to vote in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, the ordinance passes. Moving on to item M. 5, resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Street Fund O2 and the Capital Improvements Fund 46 to cover the cost of invoices from Adleta Construction for 2020 not to exceed $400,000 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Donardo.
I'd like to have all three readings on this.
Motion by Mr. Donardo to have all three readings. May I have a second? Mr. Thompson.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Mr. Kelch. I'm sorry, Mr. Geraci.
Are we approving $400,000 just in anticipation of an additional $88,000 or so thousand dollars outside of what we've already gotten through the chair to the mayor, I guess?
Mr. Mayor.
The Safety Service Director's here, he can talk about what, what this is about and why, why he's asking for this.
Mr. President, Mayor Calto, would you read, could not, it's hard for me to hear back to the question.
Just wondering if we're approving $400,000 in this one, because we anticipate another $88,000 or so thousand dollars in additional invoices later.
The reason for this request is a paper, basic paper mistake in my office where we neglected to get the paperwork filed to pay Adalita for Catherine and Cathedral. It was an oversight, my fault.
I understand that, I'm just, I think the total here is somewhere at $311,000, so I'm just wondering if we're approving that because we're anticipating additional invoices?
No, not for that project. They're in. The auditor put that figure on there. We've, in the discussions, we, he knows the amount that we owe Adalita, and that was the figure that was put on there. But there's no other bills coming through for Catherine or Cathedral.
Mr. Geraci.
Is there a way that we could possibly amend this to the actual amount of the invoices instead of just handing over extra money at this point?
Who are you directing that question to?
You.
Me?
Sir. Yes, sir.
Do you know the exact amount?
I can total it up if you'd like me.
Well, the motion on the floor is to, motion by Mr. Donardo, second by Mr. Thompson, for the way the ordinance is written, oh, I'm sorry, for the way the resolution is written. Mr. Kelch.
If I could just ask Mr. Murphy a question, it says not to exceed 400,000, is that just to make it go quicker in case there's other fees or anything we're not anticipating?
It would be a lot like a purchase order that's written for projected costs and they come in under. The money's encumbered, but the actual cost can't exceed what it was. In this case, that was the figure the auditor put there. To my knowledge, all invoices are in, it's a mistake in the office, they did not get paid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, I would just say that the, the contracts that were there are there, so, I mean, this is up to 400,000. I don't know why they specifically picked that number, but this is not authorizing any new contracts, it's, it's literally, and we wouldn't even, we wouldn't even be here today, we wouldn't be passing anything at all if the paperwork, if the purchase order had been requested. Now, I'm sure that the process has been changed, and that you all are going to get this fixed in the future, this is not, you know, I appreciate taking responsibility, I mean, it's not, don't take any of this as, you know, going after or anything like that, I know that you all are, do a good job there, but essentially, though, I, I'm not worried about the $400,000 figure, because again, it's, if we're not approving any new things, it's just saying, look, if the, the invoices that come in are, we're going to pay the invoices that come in, you know, basically no matter what, so it's not, like, I'm probably not explaining this very well, but I don't think it's really that big of an issue at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Mr. Geraci.
The total between the three is $311,093.98. I just, I, I don't understand trying to just open up an extra $88,000 and not knowing if that's actually going to go anywhere or go somewhere else.
Mr. Bonzel.
So, I just want to be clear here, it doesn't open up any funds that we weren't going to spend anyways had the purchase orders been submitted, so we're not telling them that we're going to give them an extra $80,000. I mean, the contracts have been submitted, so the only, you know, the only way I think that extra can be given, if you will, is maybe if there's change orders, but even then, I don't know. I think that the 400,000 is literally just a round number that they picked, but I'm sure after this discussion, they'll probably not, they'll probably lower it down, you know, in the future, but I don't think there's any ill will, and there's not going to be another $80,000 spent, there's, this does not authorize new contracts to be gone through, it just authorizes the purchase orders to be paid.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Mr. Geraci.
I do appreciate you talking down there, Mr. Bonzel, but I understand where you're coming from. The point I'm trying to make is that, why aren't we just being specific on these?
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Anyone else? Mrs. Williams, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Street Fund O2 and the Capital Improvement Fund 46 to cover the cost of invoices from Adleta Construction for 2020 not to exceed $400,000 and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Street Fund O2 and the Capital Improvements Fund 46 to cover cost of invoices from Adleta Construction for 2020 not to exceed $400,000 and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the city, or, excuse me, from the Street Fund O2 and the Capital Improvements Fund 46 to cover the cost of invoices from Adleta Construction for 2020 not to exceed $400,000 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. May I have a motion? Mr. Donardo.
I have a motion to pass the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Donardo to pass the resolution. May I have a second? Mr. Thompson.
Second that.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, resolution passes. Moving on to item N, administrative reports. Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just got a couple of quick things. One is the COVID-19 clinics are going on, they've been, they've been very successful, running about 100 octogenarians, over 80-year-olds through this building, setting up, basically parking in the, the parking lot, helping, you know, if you think about the age group, some of them are very spry, actually, we had a 102-year-old that came through that was extremely spry and didn't want a, didn't want a wheelchair, didn't want a walker, and didn't want to be asked about that, and she basically hopped out of the car and came on in and got her shot, and others have some, some health challenges, as you would expect, but we've been able to process through about 100 at each one of these clinics, and I really do commend the Health Department and the volunteers that have been working on making this all happen for them. This is a very vulnerable group, and they've done a great job at, at working to make sure this happens. They've worked to get volunteers in place, they've worked to get the paramedics in place down here helping, and the Norwood paramedics have been doing a great job, really lending support to that, and then having Public Works support outside as people come in, helping them line up, helping them get their cars close enough where they can get in, walk down the ramp, get a shot, and get back outside safely, and that's, this is a tough group, you know, when, when you talk about the logistics of this, this is a tough group to get in, and it's going to be this way with the 70s also, but then we'll get to an age group where it's the younger group, you know, the 60s, all those 60-year-olds that just jump out of their car and jog down the steps, and we can move our, we can move our clinic, our actual, this is considered a pod when we do it here, but we'll move our clinic to the Health Department at that point, and we'll probably be shutting off some parking right in front of the Health Department to facilitate even the spry 60-year-olds getting inside, but once we get past that, then, then it moves a lot quicker and, and you'll see a little more rapid, I would guess, inoculations as long as the vaccinations, as long as the stuff is coming out. That is, that's the limitation right now, and when you hear people say, you know, why aren't we just pumping, pumping it into everybody's arm, we don't have it to pump it into everybody's arm right now, and it is a two-stage shot, so you've got a shot now, and then you've got 28 days, and all of this is going to have to happen again, all these people showing up for their half-hour clinics and coming in, so it's, it's a tough stage right now. Hopefully, we'll get to where it's the one-stage shot, and you get a shot and you're done, but that's, that's a little bit off, so, so I do want to commend the Health Department, our Norwood Health Department has been doing a very good job at it. There are still, there have still been, you know, COVID testings that have been going on at the YMCA building, and then, of course, Hamilton County, I don't know if any of you, some of you I'm sure have heard, that the Hamilton County Health Department is going to start doing vaccinations out of the Board of Elections building, so Norwood is sort of, you know, with our central location, once again, we come into play in helping not just our community, but everybody in Hamilton County, and that's, that's something we can really be proud of here in the city. So, going well, and if you see people with the Health Department, please, please thank them for the work that they're doing, they are putting in long hours, there, it's a lot of stress, there's a lot of stress involved with this, as you can imagine with the vaccinations, there's a lot of people calling in, you know, they're 40 years old and they think they should be getting on the list right away for, we don't even have the vaccine in place, getting a list going for 40-year-olds isn't helpful right now, but, but they're inundated with people that are just, they're just, you know, they want to get on the list, they want to get it, and I understand that, but people have to be patient, listen to the news, and understand what's going on, so it's an important part of it. See Click Fix is in place now, we've talked about that, we talked about that months ago, that is the app that you can put on your phone, and you're able to look at a pothole, take a picture of it, send it to Public Works. Public Works gets it. They go out and fix it. They take a picture, or they close it out, and you get notification back that it's even being closed out. So, those are important parts. We have had some, I'll call them jokers, that take a big picture of a wide-open street and go, there's potholes all over this street. I mean, I'll call them jokers because they're just joking. They know that we're not going to be able to do anything, but they want to clog up the system. I mean, be realistic. These are, this is, take pictures of things that need to be fixed, and we'll fix them. Taking a picture of Montgomery Road and saying there's bumps and it needs to be fixed is not really helpful, nor is it, you're just wasting your time. So, don't do it. So, but if you do see something that needs to be fixed, that's the best way to do it now is See Click Fix. That'll go straight to Public Works, and they work on it. The auditor and I have been working on the financial recovery plan. I sent you out information about the capital improvement plan. That was an email that went out to everybody. Hopefully, you've started looking at that. The financial recovery plan is going to go to our financial supervisor, which is one of the members of the Auditor of the State's Office. And our financial supervisor will be looking at the capital improvements plan, looking at our staffing plan, looking at pretty much everything. And we'll be sending that to them soon. We've been working on it a lot. Hopefully, you're sending some information in. I know Mr. Kelch has worked on some of that stuff. Mr. Brayden's been involved in some of that stuff. Maybe some others have been communicating with Mr. Steph. That's great. So, that is, that is a work in progress. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about is this Richard E. Linder, the building that we just purchased or that we're going to purchase for $1. And we're not going to have to do a mortgage on that. I'm pretty sure we can handle that funding. But one of the things that I thought was of interest is the Committee for the Senior Center and Community Center. This is a report to council that was put together back in 1978. It was when this building was implemented. It's when the Donald E. Prue's Community Center, Senior Center, was put in place. And actually, I can, I think I'd mentioned this before, but I can scan this and have it sent out to all of you. It's interesting because there was a whole committee put together. And when I say a committee, there were 15 people on this committee, council members, members of pastors, of churches, people that were involved with the Norwood Service League at the time. Pastor James was a member of the Norwood Service League for a few years. There were, there was a representative from the senior citizens community. There was a director from the Oakley Senior Center that was on this committee. So, they brought a lot of resources together on the utilization of this building. And they had some really interesting comments that went to council as this all took place. And, you know, I would hope that we are looking at, you know, not fast-tracking it to the point that we overlook things, but fast-tracking this so that that building is not sitting there for a year. And I heard mention of two years. I can't imagine that building sitting there two years without us being able to utilize it and really get it running. But this report also talks about staffing and how critical of a need it is to have the right staffing in place when you're utilizing a facility like that. We don't, with COVID, we don't have a recreation director right now. So, we're going to look at that. And I started looking at a recreation director for the city, if you may recall, back in November. I was saying, well, we need to get that going. But then I'd started hearing about this, so that got put on the back burner. And now, we're in a position where we can look at it. The recreation director's position is totally different if we're looking at something like that as a recreation center with the indoor pool and all the different amenities that it can bring to our community. So, there's a big difference there. The structure of this committee that was put together is quite honestly, it was a committee that the president of council, at that time, was Bill Cosgrove. The president of council was the one who put together this committee and appointed people to the committee. So, it was council's prerogative who was on the committee and what sort of the mission of the committee was during that. So, I'll have this scanned and send it to each of you so you can read through it. And then, we're going to have to come up with some pretty quick ideas on how, what we really want to do. Utilization and even looking at the building, we have, I think, 30 days from the point, from this point to do sort of our due diligence and really look closely at that building. So, if you haven't been in there, we'll get some, we'll get some tours of that building going so we can, you know, get into the mechanical rooms and really dig into it and see. We know there's, much like this building had at that time, but we, and still has, some requirements for accessibility. We know that that building has some accessibility requirements that we're going to have to look at also. So, you know, for a dollar, it's a great buy for the city, but absolutely, there's going to have to be some improvements. There's going to have to be some things that we're going to have to look at as we move forward. So, it's got an interesting challenge again, and we'll go after it. And I think we actually will have a great amenity for the city in the future. So, that's, I think that's pretty much all I have to say. I'm relatively brief. Thank you.
Mayor Schneider, any questions? Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President, through the chair of the mayor. Last meeting, you talked about some new possibilities for Elm Avenue, low-cost opportunities that we were looking at. Do you have any more information about that?
Actually, with our engineering from JMA, I had asked that they, they sent me information by last Friday, and I have not seen that information. An engineering estimate on what it would cost to move, basically, or to implement detention in a different area. But I should have that soon. I hope to have some preliminary numbers to put into the budget and into the financial plan. But no, I don't have those numbers yet from them.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to touch base. There's rumors going around that Paycor has pulled out of the three floors that they leased at Central Park. Just wanted to see if there's any rumor to that. I know that that's a big fear with the way COVID has been going with some of the, you know, some of our bigger businesses maybe sticking with the at-home, you know, office instead of major office. So, have you heard of anything like that, or is, can you confirm or deny?
Well, I know that Paycor is absolutely challenged with COVID, and they moved a lot of people out of the office space. But I have, and they, they've been challenged. I can't confirm that they will be coming at, coming back or that they are going to look at different ways to run their business. But it's not just Paycor, you know.
Oh, yeah.
And when we talk about office space, it's interesting because, you know, every, if you look at the Cincinnati Business Courier and all of them, they're talking about how office space is crazy, the market for office space, and what it's going to be like in the future. So, there's a lot of different predictions. There are predictions that it's going to stay this way, and that people will continue to work from home. And then there are predictions that once this pandemic's back over, that companies will recognize our productivity level is down, you know, how much. And they'll start doing some numbers, and they'll start saying, we got to get people back in the office and meeting together and get productivity back up. We all recognize that productivity is down because of COVID. I mean, there's no business that you can call right now and say, I need this yesterday. And they'll say, okay, we'll expedite it and have it to you tomorrow, because they're all challenged with COVID. And that has, you know, they're going to get back to that. I mean, the free enterprise system is hustle and meet the needs of the customers. That hasn't been the system we've been operating under with COVID. So, we'll see once the, once the vaccinations get out there and people start moving around again, whether that changes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor Schneider.
Actually, I had one.
Mr. DiNardo?
I, I'll email him. But have you heard word if the Health Department has adequate volunteers right now? Like, is there still a need for volunteers?
Yes. Yes, sir, there are. And we just, just yesterday, I talked to the Health Commissioner, and he has been really challenged with the staff that they have, you know. You would think, oh, well, the Health Department can handle a pandemic because they're the Health Department. But they have, they have all the regular work that they do on a normal basis is still going on. So, they are challenged with volunteers. They have been, had been inundated. When I, when I talked about telephone calls and calling the Health Department and trying to schedule, and you're 35 years old, and you think you need to call the Health Department, and you're going to get on the schedule. So, their telephone system has just been bogged down. When they started hearing, people started hearing, hey, Norwood's got, you know, clinics going on. These people who are 30 and 40 years old, think they need the shot right away, are calling. So, they've, they've been inundated with that. Just today, we moved Deb Simpson, who's done a great job as our senior community, our senior center director. We moved her to work as the volunteer coordinator, and she's going to be working there to answer phones and to call people and people who are, and there are people that have said they'll volunteer that we haven't been able to make contact with. But we're challenged with that. The best, probably the best way to do it is to email the Health Department at this point. And that, those are the best ways where they can clear them. If you're a City of Norwood resident and you want to volunteer, the best way is to get online. Go to the city's website and then email the Health Department.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Anyone else? Mr. Dracy?
Are these vaccines that the Health Department's giving out for Norwood residents, or is it open to everybody in the county?
Mr. Mayor?
Or are we giving preference to Norwood residents?
They are, they are open to people who get on the list. So, in the City of Norwood, we have, I think in the last census, it was like 250 people over 80 years old. And we are working on a list that's, I think, 650 people long. So, there are a large amount of people outside of our community that are coming in for the shots also that are over 80 years old. So, you cannot, with the COVID vaccine, you cannot tell somebody you're from Cincinnati, you're not coming into Norwood to get your vaccine. They get on the list, and they're over 80 years old at this point, and they've, they've been scheduled. We've scheduled out pretty much every bit of the vaccine that we have. All the supply we have right now has been scheduled out. So, and when I say scheduled out, you know, these are the first shots. Then they've got to, they've got to get the second shot. So, all of that is pretty much scheduled out, and we're looking for more. I think they're, they're starting, I know that the Health Commissioner is starting right now working with the schools to get all those vaccinations completed. That's one of the next stages. And then, working on the 75-year-olds and people. So, there's, you know, if you go online, you can see the program and how it works. This is not vaccine that the City of Norwood is paying for, right? This is national, this is, this is a national emergency, and this vaccine is being provided to the community. So, we don't have the ability to say, sorry, you're not in 45212. You're not getting a vaccine. And quite frankly, our Health Department's been doing a great job at getting it in people's arms.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Move on to item O, unfinished business. Any unfinished business tonight? Mr. Kelch?
So, we recently, I think last meeting, opened up the inquiry for resumes for the nuisance property appeals board. What I would like to try to do is request that that date deadline be pushed back to February 10th. It's a Wednesday, February 10th, to allow us to canvas the city more for people to submit resumes, maybe better advertise it, and what's going to be entitled for the board since it is a new thing. And then, kind of reconvene there in the next following meeting and kind of vote on the members. And we did receive a resume that I would like to still keep, make sure is considered in that lot, so.
Thank you. Mr. Dracy?
I guess to kind of stack on to what Mr. Kelch had said, Ms. Myes up at our office has been given my information. So, anybody that has questions, she can forward them over to me. I've provided my phone number and email to her so that they, if they have any questions that she can't answer, they can get ahold of me that way.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Any more unfinished business? Mr. Dracy?
I believe back in November, I had requested that the fire department add a few lines to their activity report, which I now am, I guess, two reports in, and I still don't see the lines on here. Can we have a letter sent to them again requesting that a line for mutual aid inside the city, who comes into the city, and then who, how many times they go out of the city, be added to this report with the subcategories of apparatus utilized, engine, ladder, and medic?
Hold on. You're a little faster than I am. Okay, so, a letter sent to the fire department asking for additional lines on the report?
On the activity report.
Okay. So, you would like to, for them to add a line for mutual aid to list how many times mutual aid comes into Norwood, and how many times mutual aid goes out of Norwood, and what equipment is being used?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Any other unfinished business? Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Any new business? Mr. Dracy?
I'd like to request a Housing, Health, and Public Safety Committee meeting on, next, on the Monday, I believe it's, yeah, February 1st. If we can do that, seven, we'll say, on Monday, say 6:30. And I'll say here because of what I'm going to be requesting next, if members are available that day.
It was February 1st at 6:30 here?
Yes.
Yeah, I won't be available, but don't let us know. Go ahead and have the meeting. I just won't, I won't be able to attend.
You're good. Mr. Kelch?
Yes. So, 6:30 here, the community center, lower level.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy.
And then, on top of that, I've got some requests for people to attend. Safety Service Director to attend along with all the members of the task force for the nuisance ordinance. And what we'll do is we're going to look to set up guidelines and find out what the task force is going to be doing and how they're going to be applying that ordinance. I want to see what kind of structures set up already for it. There should be, seeing as we're like three months into this ordinance. Also, I'd like to request a representative from the Building Department to come and discuss why certain items are being ignored. I've had an influx of calls and emails regarding some complaints that the Building Department has had and has basically ignored or told the resident that they, it's not their problem.
That's next Monday, the 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other new business? Then we'll move on to item Q, communications. First communication, Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Mrs. Williams?
We got a notice to legislative authority from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. It's pretty similar to some of the other ones that we've gotten. It's the important notice to complete and return the form to Division of Liquor Control, whether or not the city is requesting a hearing. It is for a liquor license for A&R Rockwood LLC doing business as agave and rye. From, let's see, 1229, 2020. So, this is one of those where we just need to mark whether we are requesting a hearing or not.
Generally, we don't. I know this was discussed super early on in the year. So, unless there's anything that anyone really would like to request a hearing, I can go ahead and just mark no hearing requested and sign it and send it back.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we receive and file the letter and request the clerk of counsel to mark no, to not request a hearing.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel. You have a second? Mr. Thompson?
Second that.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. Receive and file the letter. Moving on to Q2 from the city auditor. Mr. Steph?
A letter dated January 12th of 2021 to Norwood City Council. Dear council members, this letter is to let you know that the December monthly financial reports were emailed to each council member on January 12th. If you have not received said email, please let me know so that I can verify your email address and also get you a copy of the reports. Sincerely, Kelly Brown, Account Clerk, Auditor's Office.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Thompson?
Move to receive and file.
Motion by Mr. Thompson to receive and file. May I have a second? Mr. Kelch? Second by Mr. Kelch. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. Motion passes. The receiving files the letter from the auditor. Moving on to item R. All members are present. Item S, adjournment. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we address.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel, second by Mr. Brayden. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
No.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present. We have six ayes, one no. Motion passes. Word.